Six thirty, I call them in each order. First item of business is public comment. If you have something you'd like to say, come to the podium. Take your name and address. Address your comments to the board and not to the public. And you have three minutes. Okay. Next item up for the agenda is Senator Martha Blumberg.
Want me up here? Here, okay. So I really wanted to thank you all for providing time. I know this is a very busy time of year. We were not able to get together in a thought for a variety of reasons. And I'm really here to see what your questions are, your concerns are about what's going on in Concord right now. I'm not sure it's really worth sort of going through what was achieved last year, but I'm happy to answer any questions around that if you would like. I have had the honor of serving as the Senate President of Hope Town now that the Senate Democrats are the majority. And we have had the ability and responsibility to set priorities for the legislature. And obviously, last year, one of the big focuses was making sure that the budget that we could support include our priorities. And those priorities included addressing the need for increased job training around the issue of workforce development, given that we're hearing everywhere that workforce is an enormous issue. We were also very interested in moving forward with addressing the mental health and substance abuse crisis. And we were able last year to open up doorways in addition to the governor's doorway program so that we could start to move the children that are in the New Hampshire Hospital into a new facility outside of Concord, and open up that space so that we could begin to move people who were being held in the Department of Corrections, in our correction facilities, into New Hampshire Hospital. And also to find a way to encourage or incentivize our hospitals around the state to open up more beds because we were seeing that many individuals were being held in the emergency rooms in hospitals, both because there wasn't room at the state hospital or there weren't enough beds at the local level to be able to address those individuals' needs. I mean, sometimes people were staying in emergency rooms around the state for as many as 23 days, just as an example. So I think we made some real progress there, just in regard to this area. Portsmouth Hospital has opened up, I think it's eight more psychiatric beds. And I need to get us a handle of what's been going on at Wentworth Douglas. You may want to ask questions around the issues of the merger between Exeter and Wentworth Douglas and the position that the Attorney General has taken. I think you also note that we markedly increased the state's investment in our public schools K through 12, and that you received a sizable amount of money, both to support education in Lee and also for revenue sharing. And what I just want to caution you is that those are one-time money spread out over two years. We have no idea what we'll be able to do in the future. The revenues in the budget right now are coming in at about expectation, but they were not coming in well from July until October. And so there's concern whether or not we're going to be able, over the next year now, to meet those budget expectations. So I'm happy to keep you informed on that. You can also sign up for a email that comes out of the Treasurers Department to see, and if you'd like me to send that link to you, I will, to see if you're not getting it, what the budget figures are coming in every month. And they also report on our unemployment rate, which is, I think, going up point of the percentage. So in addition to that, I serve on the Energy and Natural Resources Committee. I've chaired that committee in the Senate. And we worked very, very hard to expand policies in support of renewable energy and energy efficiency because we believe that that's the best way to reduce the high energy of residential, commercial, and industrial bills. And I think too often what we hear about is, you know, we need to reduce the cost of energy. Actually, with the introduction of natural gas, the cost of energy has gone down markedly over the last 10 years, but the cost of transmission and distribution has gone up. So the more that we can put in place policies that reduce pressure on peak demand, we will then be able to lessen the need for more expanded transmission and distribution. One of the concerns is now that that is the area where the utilities are actually able to bring in the highest number of revenues. So there's some tension between the utilities in terms of, to what degree should we be... There's just some, you know, concern about making sure that we have enough transmission so that we continue to have the resiliency and the stability going forward, but that we don't over-expand the development of distribution and transmission. So I think the utilities need to be held accountable by both the legislature and the PUC when they come forward with additional requests for additional transmission and distribution. So that's a challenge going forward, you know. I do have a bill this year to look at how we can help local residents get back of the meter information by installing within those back of the, you know, energy, those meters that... So we, as individual consumers, can have more control over the whole issue of peak demand, for instance. It'll be very interesting to have that bill going forward. We also know that there's a lot of work going forward to create more charging stations. And the thrust has been to make sure, first, that we have the reasonable number of charging stations on our major highways, like 93 and 95 and 89 and 91, because we have a lot of tourists passing through our state. And we're seeing more and more people buying electric vehicles, you know. So that's a really important initiative that's happening in conjunction with ever-sour. So, but we weren't disappointed in the end. The governor vetoed a lot of the bills that had to do with net metering and expanding group net metering to communities. And we're going to continue this year to try to move that type of legislation forward because, from our vantage point, we don't see it as a subsidy. We actually see it as an investment that is going to be able to reduce energy costs for everyone, you know. So, and I'm happy to talk to you a little bit more about that. So this year, we, as in the majority, are, as I said, we're working to strengthen, to keep trying to strengthen opportunities for renewable energy. We want to promote policies to address the statewide housing crisis and the local housing crisis, and it's enormously challenging. And I would think that if we could begin to sort of change our language, or we talk about what we really need to invest in is middle-income housing and low-income housing, sort of affordable housing, workforce housing, doesn't really address the issue. The issue is that we have middle-income individuals and families, low-income individuals and families, and we do not have either rentals or residences that they can afford, you know. And at the same time, the cost for building has gone up, you know. So how do we come up with initiatives that are going to reduce the cost of building and provide the type of housing that we need? We're also looking at how can we strengthen increased density in the core of communities so that local communities aren't going to have additional costs by having to extend their services out beyond the core of the community? And also because we know that, you know, there seems to be more of a demand for young people who want to work here to be able to live within the heart of a community. They don't want to have to drive. We don't have the public transportation system that we need, though I think we're very fortunate on the Seacoast to head coast. But a large burden of financing cost falls on the bands of local communities, so that continues to be an issue. We have filed bills to work on lowering the cost of prescription drugs. To the degree that we can do that within the purview of state legislation, we can't do anything about brand-name drugs, but we can try to address the issue of generic drugs, which we are allowed to regulate. And what we are seeing is that the cost of generic drugs is going up to the degree that they're charging almost as much as what a brand-name drug is charging. So we want to stop price gouging. We want to make sure that, if you signed up for a drug, for your health insurance, that those health insurance plans can't come in during the year and change the rules in such a way that it's going to raise costs for individuals who hold those health insurance plans. So those are just some of the ideas. We're also trying to put in place sort of an oversight committee that will continue to monitor what's happening to the costs of pharmaceutical drugs in New Hampshire. We continue to look at where are we in terms of the opioid crisis? We did, I sit on the Health and Human Services Committee in the Senate, and we are very moving in rather difficult testimony last week from people now who feel that perhaps we've gone too far in making it difficult for people who are really experiencing excruciating pain to get the treatments, opiates, that they need in order to stabilize or improve their quality of life. So we're going to continue to look at that, you know. So those are just a number of things that are on the agenda. But what's also important is to know, as I move forward with the legislative agenda this year, are there bills that you have great concern about, either for or against, that you can let me know so that I can do my best on behalf of the town of Lee and the residents of Lee? So that's kind of a broad brush. I hope it's useful, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and also to hear what legislation is of concern to you. I know there are things like right-to-know. I don't serve on the committees that deal with right-to-know, but I'm certainly willing to take whatever your concerns or issues are as those bills are making their way through the legislature. There's always, what, a slew of right-to-know bills every year. I don't know if we're making it better or making it worse, you know, as a good example, but that clearly impacts on local communities. So thank you very much, and happy to answer any questions or...
Do you have any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
I think it was about two years ago, there was an initiative about offshore wind.
About offshore wind?
Yes.
Yes. And the governor this fall came forward and agreed that New Hampshire could participate in this offshore wind planning program. And both David Waters and I have been appointed to that broad commission. I would anticipate that we're not really going to see offshore wind for another five to 10 years, but we are looking to all the success that's happened in Denmark and in the North Sea and also with the state of Maine. And one of the challenges will be, first of all, for this part of the country, we cannot, particularly in northern New England, we cannot have drilling platforms that are attached to the land, you know. Drop-off is too steep, and so they have to be floating platforms. And that's why we're looking at northern countries and their development. And Maine has been pretty ahead of the curve in having some trial floating platforms that are out there in Maine. What I see will be one of the things to determine between Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Maine, is where will those offshore drilling platforms ultimately be placed? I'd like to say that I think New Hampshire is in a very good position because, if you look at the Piscataqua River, we're only about a mile and a half, or three miles, from the Atlantic Ocean. If you look at, let's say, Portland, Casco Bay, very difficult to weave the transmission lines through Casco Bay to have that offshore drilling in Portland. There may be some places farther off than Maine, but I think ultimately there may be three different stations where there will be offshore drilling platforms. We also are in a position where I think there will be the potential to be able to convert the energy plants that are on the Piscataqua River because all that transmission is already in place, and be able to take the energy from offshore wind and distribute it through those energy plants that are already in existence on the Piscataqua River. So that's what's happening, and we're also working with the federal government around the issues of offshore wind.
Thank you.
Nathan?
Yes.
I have two questions.
Yes.
One, you talked about electric cars and stuff, and part of the infrastructure budget for the state, in terms of paying for that, is coming from the gas tax. You have electric vehicles not using gas, and you guys talked about in terms of something...
Like, there are two bills that are making their way through the legislature, trying to look at how we deal with electric vehicles and the fact that they use our roads, and they're not paying the gas tax. There's still a lot of controversy over what is the best solution. I tend to think that Representative Sombitch's bill is a very interesting bill, but it's very complicated to implement. But I think it's seen less like penalizing individuals for making the investment in purchasing electric vehicles. We also are looking at playing in the, you know, initiative that is sort of comparable to Reggie, but it's around the whole issue of electric cars. We have some disagreement with the governor as to what role New Hampshire should play. But I don't think that we can turn our back on these extraordinary changes that we're seeing everywhere. So that's out there. And then you had another question?
There's a bill, and I'm not sure what the number is, but it's about allowing towns to decide if they can give property tax abatements or exemptions to firefighters that volunteer.
I'll have to look into that, okay?
Because that's a problem that we have in terms of finding people to serve on our fire department because they can't afford to live and leave because the taxes are so high. So it's a hard time, a hard thing for our fire department to find those people. They used to, years ago, people lived in town, they volunteered, but now they're not.
But you know if that's a House bill or Senate bill, but I will certainly, I'll track it tomorrow. But I hear the point that, you know, and the difficulty that we have to sort of time out for middle income, that those people are hiring off, you know, and particularly municipal workers and teachers, you know. So it's harder and harder to get people who can afford to live in your communities and hold those jobs. So I'm very sympathetic to that, and I think that's one of the reasons that's there. Of course, the issue, if you give a property tax exemption, then you have to make up for that with the rest of your community. So it takes a while to educate your community as to why that's really important. But we certainly don't want to have a lack of police and fire and teachers in our communities, you know.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Senator Clark? No? Thank you.
So I hope you'll stay in touch with me. It's a little easier if you stay in touch with me because I sometimes don't have the time to reach out to you, and I'm not quite sure what is the information that you want. So don't hesitate at any time to contact me, and I hope you feel that I've been responsive to your concerns.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Morse?
Oh, there's one thing I didn't bring up, which has to do with the Medicaid tax and fees. Has that become an issue? I'll send you the information about that, okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the Select Board. Annually, I come and talk about the school budget, and this particular school budget is pretty eventful because it includes the cost, potential cost of a new middle school. So about halfway through your packet I gave you, that from color page 14 is where I'm starting, rather than from the beginning. Start in the middle. The reason I'm doing that is because I'm using the same material like in the last week in the public hearing. And as I'm talking about that, one of the most important days in terms of the school budget is actually next week at deliberative session, so I hope many people from the community attend because this is a, this is a big budget for us. And having said that, let me just start out with some of the traditional things I say, which is what was the school board's goal? The school board's budget goal was to have an appropriated amount, not to exceed 3.5%. And that, any budget that I present them would include, the teacher's contract would include the bond on the proposed middle school. And so those are pretty lofty objectives and required tremendous amount of work by the school board to reach there, as well as administration. And I'm happy to say tonight that we did do that. But before I talk about numbers, just some of the things that make West River a special place. The most objective measure I could give you that would indicate how the school system is doing is really our SAT scores. And the reason I say that is because they're nationally normed as opposed to local assessments or state assessments. And the aggregate score for our, our school system, our 11th graders, was 11.44, which made us the second highest performing school system in the state. We always seem to be tracing Hanover's tails, but other than that, we're doing a pretty extraordinary job. Our math scores are some of the highest in the state, at 74% of our kids being proficient compared to 49% on the state average. Our college placement rate is 81%, with 71% of our kids going on to four-year colleges and 10% of them going on to 3201 community colleges, our certificates of study. In this particular year, we had 19% of our kids join the military, go straight to work, which is a very high number for us. But I applaud those children who want to serve our country. Our graduation rate was 98%, well above the average in the state of New Hampshire. The data that I'm particularly proud of, and I am every single year, and I pointed out to the Select Board, is the success of our special needs population. So 100% of our special needs population graduates from high school. That's compared to 67% across the country. 0% of our kids with disabilities drop out. And 23% of those kids go on to a four-year college, 32 go on to a two-year college, 13 to a one-, two-, three-year program, and 32% of those kids enter employment. I mean, one of the measures of your success, because there are expectations of our school system that are very high, is how do we do with our neediest kids? And this particular slide says to the community and says to the Select Board that we're very successful with our neediest children. A common question I get asked is how are we doing with enrollment? This particular year, we're at the highest enrollment we've had since I've been superintendent, and this is seven and a half years finished for me, going, is going to be finishing my eighth year this year. The Masway School of particular interest to you is 373 students. The Mohairamit School is 298 students. The middle school, 665 students. And the high school is 837 students. That includes 170 tuition students, most of which are from Barrington, that bring in approximately $3 million worth of revenue that we wouldn't get otherwise. In terms of long-range projections, you are probably aware that the district has had a committee in place for over a generation, over 20 years, Long Range Planning Committee. They customize the projections for the district, so our numbers are pretty solid. You can see in the next five years, the school system will still be over 2,000 students. And they don't have a way of calculating the impact of, you know, the new highway coming in across from Portsmouth and those kinds of things. I really do think that's going to have an impact on population, of course. And Lee of three towns has seen the greatest population increase in terms of students. Five years ago, you were at 686 students. Today, you're at 706 students. Durham numbers have been relatively stable, and Medbury numbers have actually gone down during that time period. So then we get into the numbers. So remember that the board directed me to present a budget to them that included everything, A to Z, street nuts, don't come in with anything other than everything being inclusive. And this is how we did it. We started out with a proposed budget from everyone across the district before it started getting edited at 4.28%. I cut $1 million, pretty much, at my office. Then there was another half-million dollar cut. And then we thought we had reached the end of the spectrum, and we cut another $110,000. But in the last session of the board, they decided that we needed to cut it even further, and we cut another $265,000. So in that slide, you're probably trying to figure out, is that number correct? So the operating budget for the proposed 2021 school year is at 0.2%. So that is less than a quarter of a percent. Why is that? Go back to the original goal, and the board said, first payment of the bond has to be part of what we present to the community, and the teacher's contract has to be part of what we present to the community. So we add back in $627,364 for the first year of five-year contract with the Teachers' Guild, and $625,000, which we estimate to be the first payment of the proposed middle school should it pass on March 10th, bringing us to a total increase of 2.83%. So every budget has drivers. The big one for us was health insurance. Health insurance never follows inflation, as you guys know. Health insurance for us was 8.6% increase, or $459,000. And then the Guild agreement was $627,364. As part of that agreement, the Guild took concessions and health insurance, and we're offering a new higher deductible health insurance plan as an option. The real story in terms of the proposed budget and how we kept it so low was reducing our capital improvement account by $749,305. So the next slide just gives you a sense that the 2.83% actual growth is the lowest in the last five years, again emphasizing that it includes the two warrants on the teacher's contract as well as the new middle school. So we're actually looking at a proposed budget of $47 million,300,000. So we're actually looking at a proposed budget of $47,326,181. The next section just gives you a sense of where we spend our money. And then probably the more important section is what we estimate the impact to the towns are. So we really emphasize the word estimate because we know that we're a year early. There's no increased assessment property value in these numbers. And these numbers historically go down. As a reminder, a year ago, when I was doing this presentation to you, we thought that the impact on the town of Lee was going to be $1.92. And once assess values came in and adjustments, it came out to be 0.92, less than a dollar. That would have been a big increase in and of itself. $1.92 was a bit shocking. And so I know that you as a body took action. The school board took action. And then Senator Clark noted the increased appropriation from the state. That had a massive impact on the proposed budget that I'm presenting to you tonight. So the impact for the three towns, the Durham impact on the budget is 57 cents per thousand. The Medbury impact is 44 cents per thousand. And the impact on the town of Lee is seven cents. So we know that these are estimates. We know that they are high estimates because Sue Caswell and I were diligently on making sure that we're putting together conservative and believable numbers so that a year from now, you all can say, you're overestimated. And we anticipate when we get next September, you'll say the same thing. To give you a sense of the history of our projections versus our actual, that's here in the chart that I shared with you. Here's the interesting thing for everybody to understand. Should our budget fail on March 10th at the polls, the impact of the default budget would be a $702,620 increase in what we're asking the communities to spend on education. So we're not asking the communities to spend that money. We're asking them to support the budget we've presented. We're confident that the budget we presented provides the services necessary to support our children, our teachers, and our community. And we would hate for our budget to fail and end up having to have a bigger impact on taxes than we're estimating tonight. The next section just gives you a sense of what actual warrant looks like. And now I just want to do kind of a brief on the proposed middle school. Brian is your school board graph. Brian is probably the most fiscally knowledgeable and the most fiscally conservative on the school board. He represents the town of Lee specifically. He's not an at-large member and he has done a fantastic job of representing you. What we're really trying to achieve in the new school is not wasting taxpayers' money. The current school opened in 1936. It's been added on to four times. The infrastructure for that school started in 1936. Then there was a 1949 and a 1952 and a 1994 and there was one in the 70s and so forth. You get the picture. As recently as Friday, we were dealing with a sewage smell through the building. We think, well, just fix it. Well, you have to understand that all of those pipes now go through five, the new and four additions. And fixing it when a building is this old is problematic. As an example, we had three different drawings showing us on Friday that a trap existed or didn't exist because the drawings are inconsistent. We literally had to go walking through where one of the drawings said it was. And sure enough, we found a trap that had been laid over by linoleum and tile. And so we had to break through the linoleum to find the trap that supposedly wasn't there anymore. This is what happens when you have a building this old. We're spending an enormous amount of energy for this building because as those additions have gone on, at various points in our life cycle of this building, energy was cheap or energy was super expensive. I happen to have been a teacher in the 70s and, you know, that's when cost of fuel was through the roof. Right now, again, going back to Senator Clark's presentation, natural gas is relatively cheap. So heating goes through cycles. We have calculated that it costs us 51 cents per kilowatt hour to operate this building. The proposed school would be 19 cents. The proposed school is 32% bigger than the current school and 66% more energy efficient. That's incredible. But because you're using modern construction design, you're using an over insulated building, roof, walls, and floor, because we're proposing using geothermal as opposed to relying on fossil fuel, because we're putting in triple pane windows instead of single and double pane windows that are in the current school, all of those reasons, we can drive our annual energy costs down dramatically. When we talk about classroom space, we know, for example, that 45% of the classrooms in the current school are inadequate. They're too small. They were built for an elementary school and we have middle school kids in them. We know in the current school that our ADA compliance is suspect at best. We have a youngster who's in a wheelchair. In some cases, we've had to roll them outside the building to bring them back in to get to the floor they needed to be in. In other cases, we have chairlifts that fail on a regular basis. We get them repaired and they fail again. We have two elevators in the building. One goes to the third, second and third floor. The other one goes from the basement to the first floor. So a kid has to go through a chairlift to an elevator, to another elevator, to get to the very top floor. It's just, it's a building that has done its duty for the district. As an example, the Dover High School building that went up this year was built in 1967. The original building was built in 1967. 30 years later than this middle school. In terms of just comparability, in terms of cost, we hired a construction manager for this project who has sat by my side and Brian's side because he serves on the committee. And when the architect would come up with a crazy idea, we'd turn to the construction manager and he would just go like that and we'd say, come up with a better plan. So in terms of cost effectiveness, we really feel like a new building will service the taxpayers better. If we hang on to the current building, it does not mean we're not spending money. We will be spending millions of taxpayer dollars keeping this building running when it really has to be retired. So those are some of the highlights of the proposed budget. And again, the impact in this first 2021 budget is seven cents per thousand at this point, which we know is going to go down when we get to fall, when we have the assessed value. For the Select Board to give you a sense of, you know, why, what would be the cost of the consequences of the proposed school not being approved? It could be as much as $28 million if you wait five years. $16 million if you wait three years. Construction costs are going up 4% to 6% per year. This chart that I gave you today is based on 4%. So we took the more conservative figure. Then finally, I would add that building costs right now in terms of bonding the money is as low as it's been in a very, very long time. The most recent issue with bond bank was 2.17%, 2.17%. The high school bond, which ends in three years, is 4%. That's more of the typical number that we were getting because of the bond bank, because of what's happened in Washington in terms of the Federal Reserve. The time to do this work is now. Then finally, I would just share with the Select Board, we have a guaranteed maximum price. So the number that we have in the warrant of $49,872,000 and some change is locked. It's not going to cost the taxpayers a penny more because we got a guaranteed maximum price from the construction manager. So we know what we're putting in that warrant is exactly what this building will cost. So I brought Brian up today because I was afraid you might have some math questions. And Brian is the man who I turn to when we're talking at the board level. Sue's the person I turn to as we're building a budget and we're ready to answer any questions the Select Board may have.
John, do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Appreciate the seven cents. That's pretty impressive. What happens the next year?
Yeah, so I gave the board a five-year perspective on how the bond will grow. And so this is, this is, this meditation, you want to step in. But the board was very deliberate. So this has been for us, this middle school has been about a five-year project. We didn't jump into this yesterday. And part of the issue we face in New Hampshire is there are no state dollars to support schoolhouses. The money that the state raises pays for previous bonds and every year a little bit gets available. Most communities do what Dover has done and what Newmarket has done and said, look, you know, if we wait around for state dollars that aren't ever going to come for school construction, then, you know, we're going to be behind the heat ball even more. The school board entered into a five-year plan based on level debt where the payment increases incrementally each year. What Dover did, what Newmarket did, what most school systems and municipalities do is they go out and bond the whole thing on level principle and the impact on the taxpayer is dramatic and it's immediate. And you might recall the newspaper headlines when Dover got the tax bill for their new high school, people were in shock. The approach that the school board has chosen is a much more deliberate and carefully thought-out plan so that each year, the cost of the new middle school based on their commitment and their direction to me has to be embedded in the operating cost. So when Sue and I talked about that, we looked at that slide where I gave you the history of the increases, I said, Sue, how would we articulate this to the communities? Because, you know, somehow they're going to say, well, wait a minute. This is an additional cost, so how come it's not costing us more? It's because we're stripping down our capital budget to get there. And what our increases were the last five years, if we had the middle school bond approved by the voters, would have still been those increases based on the direction of the board. So the board's been very deliberate. The impact, obviously, in the first year is marginal, but right to your question, John. In the second year of the five years, it's a bigger hurdle for the school system to get over. And I gave you a memo that gave you kind of the different tools that were at the school board's disposal to help mitigate that big bite. And, you know, one of them, for example, is to offer retirement incentive to our teachers. We have a lot of teachers in this district at the tippy-top of the scale who are retirement age ineligible. And so if we offered a retirement incentive, then we'd free up several hundred thousands of dollars to go towards the new middle school. So a lot of those ideas are here. Again, going back to the capital cost, we'd get several hundred thousand dollars there. We have, we have over the last six years, built trust funds for emergencies and for increases, unanticipated increases, so we could use those. So the school board, when they built this plan, really thought through, in particular, 2122. That is the year that is going to be the hardest work for the school board to do and stay within the confines of the overall budget. But we're confident that we can do it. I can't remember who asked Senator Clark about, no, she mentioned it, the fact that Lee is a beneficiary of the work that the legislature did in this past session. Of the three towns, Lee is the beneficiary in our district, receiving about $430,000 plus thousand additional dollars as a result of Senator Clark and the legislature and the governor finally coming to a resolution. The scary part for me as a superintendent is exactly what she presented in her presentation. The governor and the legislature agreed to two years. The issue that we face as a state and as a community is that two years has to become permanent. We have many communities in this state who rely almost exclusively on state subsidy for education. We happen to be a community, the three of us together, Oyster River community, that isn't reliant on state support. But we dearly love it when it comes in and that's really why we're at seven cents. That additional support plus the work the school board did to keep the cost of the operating budget down. So I guess my message to Senator Clark would be, please do the great work, again, that you did in this session to help us be able to provide the public education that our kids deserve in this district, but more importantly, in the poorer districts across the state.
And I think you know there is a new commission that has been put together to deal with the convalescence. So I'm not sure what direction that's going to take. And I know that initially there was more money for public education. But when it came over to the Senate, we were really faced with some major healthcare issues. So we tried to balance that out and we're proud of the way we were able to invest the money in public education and also deal with these other issues.
Thank you, Senator Clark. So questions from the Select Board?
I have a second question. Just for a point of clarification. If the bond doesn't pass, you said it's $625,000? But you came up...
The bond doesn't pass...
So what happens? You said we split all $749,000?
No.
There's something I didn't understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Article IV is the total budget.
Yes.
If the total budget were to fail on March 10th, then we would end up taxing Lee and Medbury and Durham $702,000 more than we're asking for. So if there was any budget that was ever going to pass in the history of the district, this should be the one. Because, you know, we're saying to you as a school system that we can live without that $702,000 and not impact the quality of education we're offering to children. Concurrently, we're saying to you, include the new middle school and the impact is seven cents.
I got it. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that, John.
I can just add in there, John. You had mentioned, you know, increases for the future. And one of the ways we did that was over the last few years, I've only been there three years now, but over the last three years, we really actively took a lot of the capital expenditures off the table. We did the entrance of the Masway School, the addition of the Masway School, the new addition, the new front area to Moharomet. We redid all through Homeland Security audits. We got that off the table. That was done at the high school as well. Obviously, we didn't really think of the middle school because we're waiting to see what happens with this bond. But we took a lot of that off the table. So if we didn't have any major expenditures coming up down the pike, so we could free up that cash in order to do that. That was one of the things that we kind of required as a board. We want to make this feasibly work for the taxpayers because obviously, we're all taxpayers. We want to make sure it affects everyone minimally. And that's how we really had to set the table of all that. Only thing we can do is keep our hands crossed on the middle school if nothing major happens there because anything that breaks there is always expensive, so.
Well, it appears that would have to, with being, you know, the other schools are in pretty good condition. If the bond does pass, all schools should be in a relatively good position, not requiring a lot of construction.
And that's why we did the windows, we did the lights. We did all the stuff. You saw, you saw a lot of work at the Masway School. And that was basically to clear the table of all the major stuff, just minor stuff here and there that we can do. This means a lot of our own internal work and not have to go out and have a major construction project, which most districts have every year, so.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, anything?
No, I'm good.
Oh, I haven't asked any questions yet.
Oh.
There must be some benefit to being up here.
I don't know. I haven't turned that far. My knee stops me.
Couple of things, Dr. Morris. I think Mr. Lacorice asked you a question. I don't think you answered it.
Okay. Second year, I did some quick calculations based on what Sue sent us. And I think the difference in terms of the bond passing or not passing is about 42 cents. And then it goes up to, and this is just my calculations, not assuming any change in terms of daily attendance or valuation at all. Goes up to 92 cents, 101, 151, and then it kind of levels off at 202. So I'm not sure if that's my calculation. So I don't know if maybe Brian and/or Sue could speak to that. So I don't know if maybe Brian and/or Sue could speak to that in terms of what the actual effect of this particular bond is. I understand what you're doing, you're reducing operating expenses to compensate for this, but just feed into that particular issue.
What we've done with the first two years of the bond, if it passes, is we're doing interest only, to lessen that expense that we have. When the, when the high school bond retires, there's over 750,000 approximately that will get pushed over to the new bond. It's a race of reallocating a lot of funds. We also are, we've also saved up, part of our capital budget is to start paying down some of that as well, to offset it. So we're trying to kind of lessen the curve rather than have a, like this, we're trying to level it as much as we can. And by our math, that's what we've figured to be able to do. Now, there are certain things we're not going to have control over. I mean, one thing that we did have control over, we were able to get under control. For example, we did a five-year contract with teachers this year, rather than three years. So we know our cost of that over the next five years. That was huge for us. Many other things that we wanted to make sure we had control over, we had control and we did. So we feel unless something absolutely astronomical and catastrophic happens over the next two to three years, we should be able to keep those reliable items, because we did take a lot of things off the table, like I said.
People have been asking me questions, how can they build this brand-new school and it's only going to cost us seven cents? And what you're doing is commendable, you've kind of worked a way out, but it's not reaching the voter in terms of, because it's kind of complicated. So I'm not sure in terms of your presentation, I haven't seen one other than one you've been here, but that's not coming across to people, because they're very, very skeptical, they don't believe you when you say, our tax bill is only going to up seven cents for this $50 million building. And I understand what you're doing, but that's not coming across, they're not getting it. So essentially, it comes down to the reallocation of our own budget to be able to go up the bond. And we can continue to do that into the next school year, and the next 21-22 is the year where reallocation and using these different techniques will be able to keep the cost reasonable. We're not saying that there's no cost to the middle school. This happens to be a year, because of the work of the legislature, that we can keep the cost on the town of Lee low. But last year, we thought it was going to be $1.92 per thousand, it turned out to be 92. The way that it works in our district, as you know more than anybody, Scott, is that the cost per year shifts based on what's happening in that given town. So people often ask me, well, give me what the cost is going to be in '24, '25. I would be lying to them if I told them a number. And, you know, to estimate a number that's based on a falsehood just isn't in my nature. So it's really easy to understand, and we think about, we're taking a school budget, we're reallocating the capital accounts, and we're using trust funds that we set aside specifically for this purpose in the past, and we're using techniques like early retirement to shift the cost internally as much as we possibly can. So another year, seven cents, might be 52 cents, just like it is in Durham. But that would be the shifting of assessments between the three towns and the population. So it is complicated, but in its simplest term, is using our own budget as much as we possibly can to keep the cost of the new school reasonable. And part of that is how we financed it as well. Financing it on interest only for two and a half years gets us to the high school bond retiring, gets us to another 750,000 that's already in our budget that we can commit to the school. So it's a complicated story, to get too simple gets to misrepresentation. And you know me well enough to know that I'm as straight a shooter as there is, I give people honest answers and they don't make stuff up. So that's really it in a nutshell.
Any other questions for Dr. Morris from the audience?
Hi, Dr. Morris. I'm Peg Dolan.
Peg.
Oh, you want me to go up there?
Always. This is where we take a picture of you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I have to look at you and I want to look at Dr. Morris.
Make her stand over there.
Hi, I am really in favor of this middle school, but I would like it to be clearer as to what we're actually going to pay, second year, third year, fourth year. And I know, maybe we can't do that, but, you know, when you're trying to plan ahead, it's difficult to know what, so that's my question.
Do you have that memo there that I gave you in the first, second, third, fourth year? I can give you the direct answer to that. So this is old, this is old data. I wrote this memo to the board at the beginning of December, and it continuously changes. Why does it change? Because we get new information. So when I wrote this particular memo to the board, the interest rate we used was 3.5%. And then, at the end of December, the bond bank issued a new, a new issue, and then the beginning of January, they entered a new issue. So when I say issue, it's what the interest rate is. So at the beginning of December, it was, we used 3.5%. By the time we got to the, this time, beginning of January, it was down to 2.17%. So every number that I share here is too high, okay? But when you are presenting numbers, you'd rather present conservatively, so that when people come back, they don't say, you said it was going to be 1.2 and it turned out to be 1.3. So when I say it's 1.2, I'm saying that's a high number, it should be lower. When will we know? We won't actually know until the bond bank issues the bonds, and that's not until July, so we'll know in August. So based on the memo that I wrote to the board, in 20, so in 2021, the proposed budget, 625,000, that's the bond payment. So that 625,000 is done, and we have to add another 625, and then a third time for the new issue of the bond. So the second year, this is the issue that I was saying to Scott, the 21-22 budget on this bond is the hardest budget for us to get through. It's 1.2 million. In the third year, it drops down to 622,000. And the fourth year, these are new dollars, new dollars, 214,000 new dollars, and then the fifth year, it's 207,000. So you can see there's a big difference between the fourth and fifth year in 21-22. So that, when you reach that point, you're at about 3 million. The bond is going to be about 3 million a year from that point on, but it's already in the budget. So that's why the board has taken this five-year step forward, because it's the least impactful on taxpayers. So all of those numbers should be lower come July.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for asking the question.
And I don't know if it was mentioned too, but we are splitting, looking to split the bond in two, basically almost 25 million each, well, 25 million in '24 changed. That obviously has a much easier cost the first year, because we don't need all 49 million in one year. Not to mention, we can use funds from that, in our trust funds, from when that money's in there. So that's some of the ways we're mitigating some of it. But most of it was the splitting of the bond, we just thought that was an easier way to go. We don't need it all upfront, we wait a year for the second issue of the bond, for the second half of the bond, that way we're not doing what a lot of the other districts are doing, which is just piling it all on in one year, and just letting it, just putting it on the shoulders of that care, so.
Any other questions for Dr. Morris or Brian? No? Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Do you need the rest of your team?
As well, y'all know, Todd Allen lives in Lee, he's my assistant superintendent, they both do an awesome job for you and for the children of the district.
All right, next item, Bill Hump, Conservation Commission chairperson.
In 2001, Richard Stevens signed a conservation easement at the town of Lee to permanently conserve 5.6 acres of his land on Tunnel Road, quartering the Lul River and the Lamprey River. A conservation easement is a legal document that restricts what the property owner can do with the land. The holder of the conservation easement, in this case, the town, has a legal obligation to ensure that the land is managed in conformance with the terms of the conservation easement. To do that, the Conservation Commission monitors each property on which the town holds the conservation easement. That must be done yearly. Last July, while monitoring Richard Stevens' property, I found a large structure of which you have a picture in your documents. I later arranged for several of my Conservation Commission colleagues to accompany me to see the treehouse and to meet with Mr. Stevens. He told us that since Lee's zoning ordinance does not require a building permit for treehouse, that it must be permissible. However, what matters is not a local ordinance, but rather the conservation easement. In a subsequent discussion, Conservation Commission determined that the conservation easement does not permit the treehouse. We later arranged for a site visit by an easement specialist from the Southeast Land Trust of New Hampshire, otherwise known as CELT. CELT has a legal right, known as an executory interest, in overseeing the Stevens' conservation easement. They are authorized to take over the easement if they determine that the town is not enforcing it. It was the opinion of the staff person from CELT that the conservation easement does not allow the construction or placement of a treehouse. To ensure that the Conservation Commission's analysis was correct, we sought a legal opinion from the town's attorney, Sharon Summers. She concluded the treehouse is impermissible under the terms of the conservation easement. In late fall, we shared the attorney's analysis with Mr. Stevens. A commission colleague and I met with him, hoping we could reach an amicable settlement in which he would remove it voluntarily. He refused. That has brought us to where we are tonight, asking that you sign the letter directing him to remove the treehouse. If you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
My first question is, I haven't seen the letter from the lawyer or any...
It's in the package.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I also, I also got kind of hung up on the word "structure," because when I looked, when I looked at the legal definition of "structure" through Google, it says that the structure has to be fastened to the ground in order to be qualified as a structure. And when I look at the house in question, the treehouse in question, I don't see any attachment to the ground that makes it a structure. And to be perfectly honest, I don't understand the reason. I know, I understand those words, but I don't understand the reason for having to take it down. I mean, what does it, what does it hurt, Bill, from a conservation point of view, or what is it hurting?
Well, if you would read the easement, let me find the right page here. There are certain buildings that are permitted under this conservation easement. However, it says, "Any such barn, maple sugar house, shed, or other ancillary building shall be set at least 150 feet from the top of the nearest bank of the Lamprey River and at least 200 feet from the top of the nearest bank of the Lul River." This treehouse fails on both those counts. Is it doing damage, physical damage to the river? No. Does it set a precedent for other landowners to have conservation easements on their land as to what they can do and get away with? I'm afraid it would. And going back to your question about the definition of "structure," the synonym that I found in Merriam-Webster was "building." Is that a building in the photograph? I would certainly say so. Conservation Commission voted unanimously that it does not conform to the requirements of easement.
Mr. Brown, we had another question?
Well, I noticed that Mr. Stevens is here, so I assume he's going to get up and speak.
If he wishes to, I can acknowledge it, but did you have any more questions from the show?
No, I have no questions.
I'm also, did anybody else like to speak for this? No, he's shaking his head, no. All right.
Well, at this point, we only rely on our commission...
Oh, we do have a comment. Mr. Tapp.
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road, and just for completeness, it doesn't say "structure" only, it says "no structure or improvement." So if you can have a conversation about "structure," you can have a conversation about improvement too. And I'm not taking sides here, I just would like to have a board that has actually read all the text.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hump, but I'm going to ask you to come back, I have a question for You mentioned before, CELT is the executor or executive?
Executory interest holder.
So let me give you a hypothetical. The board this evening decides that we're not going to sign this letter, we're not going to pursue this. Is the subsequent action most likely going to be that CELT's going to enforce that particular thing and then force him to take it out anyways? Based on their representative coming to see it and said that it violates the easement?
I would say that's a very highly probable outcome.
So it sounds like either we do it, or they're going to do it.
Well, and let me elaborate on if they do it. They have the ability to take the conservation easement away from the town of Lee, but the town has spent significant tax dollars acquiring, and we have nothing that we can say about that. And they can charge the town for any legal expenses that they incur in the enforcement. So it's not a pretty picture.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Anything else? Anybody else? So we'll see what the board would like to do. I moved to send a letter as presented by the Conservation Commission to Richard Stevens, directing him to remove the impermissible structure, i.e. treehouse, from the land covered by the conservation easement. On the second. Sir? Any discussion?
No, only to a point that I felt that the Conservation Commission has done due diligence on this and followed through for multiple areas. I do see a picture of the treehouse, unfortunately, it's a beautiful-looking treehouse, but I think at this point, we need to follow the recommendation of the board.
Anything else, Brown? Discussion, no? Allos in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Allos opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Vote passes two to one.
Do you have something, a version for us to sign?
Do you have something, a version, for us to sign? All right. I'll set number six. Julie Glover, Town Administrator?
So as you should all be aware, the deliberative session is Saturday at the Hasway School. And as we have done for many of the past years, I've put together a PowerPoint presentation, which is essentially just a listing of the warrant articles and then some information of the operating budget. I know that our new town moderator is here, Mr. Quigley. I've had a couple of conversations with him regarding how he might want the deliberative session to go. And certainly, he can speak for himself, but he had indicated that he would prefer that the select board read the warrant articles. In the past years, we've had various different people read the warrant articles. He would give his preference to have the select board read each of the articles. And then obviously, if anyone has questions or if there's further information that, for example, a department head could provide, then the department head could certainly come up to the podium and offer more information or answer questions. Also, if the board has any questions about what's put in the PowerPoint or if you want to see something different or take something out, let me know. So it's up to you how you want to approach this at this time. If you want to just go through the warrant articles and make a decision as to who's going to read them, we can do that.
Well, we can assign somebody to read it.
Yes. Well, again, it was a preference of the moderator.
Is that because he knows all three of us have a nice speaking voice?
Whose election it is to have the board read them.
Mr. Quigley, is anything you'd like to tell us besides what the town administrator said?
Well... I think Don Quigley, moderator of 75 Turtle Pond Road. Just, whereas this is my first go-round, trying to keep my thoughts and brain organized as much as possible, I just think it would be better to have someone read the articles and then I would take over from there with the body. Just my thoughts about... And you guys have done a great job in the past of reading the articles.
Jeez.
Well, look at that.
Do you have any objections? Because sometimes when we have, like, a fire department...
Well, you're right. A department head would be fine to read the article. It is what?
That's part of his job, please.
Somebody from the board or whoever.
We can dispense with a lot of boards that way.
That's my preference. Thank you. I'm going to start the meeting on Saturday by reading a couple paragraphs of instruction for the group. And then we'll get into the articles. And so if you wanted to see what I was going to read relative to those instructions, I can make that available to you, similar to what's been done over the years by other moderators. And I don't think there are any surprises in there.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Do you want to go through them and just... Oh, oh, Mr. Tappin?
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. A few years ago, the town administrator used to open with some very brief explanation of some of the terms that the legislative body will be seeing, terms like "reason appropriately" and what that means and why it's in there. And more recently, I understand she was not allowed to do that. If she's allowed to do that, I think it would be beneficial because otherwise, the question comes up and people don't understand some of those terms.
Okay, that's fine. Are you amenable to doing that again?
Sure.
All right. Do you want to go through each of these and assign it to somebody?
Yes, we should. But you have to read them because my computer jumped out.
Oh, well, I can share these. So the first one is town officers. So who's going to do that one?
Do you do town offices?
I don't know.
No, the first two are usually the moderator just reads them because they automatically, there's nothing to discuss.
Okay.
They just move to the ballot.
I can agree to that on number one, but I think number two, I think Ms. Rossi should read that one.
Oh, that's got her name all over it.
Are we okay with that?
Yep, agreed.
Now, if Karen didn't say anything in the back, I wouldn't have recognized that, but she kind of giggled and laughed a little bit too much. Number three, municipal building? That's like Hamlet, Jesus.
Someone who has to read that.
I'll read.
You want to do that one?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Brown's doing number three.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
You're welcome.
Item number four, operating budget. Do you want to do that one?
Yes, that's definitely within your range.
Okay. I would do number four, which has lots of...
Oh, you've got a question?
Nope.
Would there be a presentation about the operating budget?
There's a whole bunch of pages.
So that's all in the article?
Yeah.
So you're not going to make any other presentation?
Forty pages here, I think, or something.
All right.
Yeah, well, it's like 12, 12 pages, so I'll do that.
Scott, you're doing that?
Yeah, I might need a short break in between, but I'll just get some other stuff. Item number five, I would think Chief Nimitz.
Sure.
I was going to scare him until he said yes anyway, so...
Can I say no? No?
You can.
I'll do it if he doesn't.
No, no, he's doing it. It's written all over his face.
No. Six.
What is six?
Thermal imaging camera. I'd say that's Chief Nimitz, too.
That is Chief Nimitz, definitely.
We just have to remember that he can't move it because he's not a resident of the town.
You got that.
But he wants to speak to it. Article number seven, the parish house? I'll do it if nobody else wants to do it. Item number eight, fire equipment capital reserve fund?
Chief Nimitz.
Article number nine, town buildings capital reserve fund?
I will do that.
Item number 10, highway department, road and bridge capital reserve fund?
I'll do this side.
You want Steve to do it?
Sure. He needs a public appearance.
Highway equipment capital reserve fund?
It's got the same name right on there.
I've also noticed that Mr. Lacourse hasn't chosen just one so far, so...
It's okay.
Mr. Brown and I are watching that. Transfer station equipment?
That's definitely Steve. You're going to have to listen to me talk for three in a row.
Absolutely.
Fire ponds and cisterns?
Cam, that's a little bit cheap.
See, chief, when you ask for somebody, then you have to get up and speak to them.
I'm going to greet you, isn't it?
Re-evaluation?
It's fine.
You want to do that one?
It is fire.
Fifteen, internal service account and recruit benefits?
Julie.
Julie.
I don't ever read them.
I'll do it. I'll do it. I'll do fifteen. Sixteen, contingency?
That's good for me.
You want to do that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Seventeen, heritage commission? Do you want to have the heritage commission person do that?
Yes, that's good, I do. Make sure you let them know, they're going to do it.
She will be there ready.
I'll be keeping track of it right now.
And that's it.
What name do we have next to the heritage commission?
Pat Jenkins?
Just quickly go through them again now, so I can...
Okay.
I will also have a copy of this for everyone to have to deliver.
With the name on it? Oh, good, thanks.
So item number three is Carrie Brown. Item number four is Scott Lutby. I'll have to go through all the pages. Item number five is Chief Nimitz. Item number six is Chief Nimitz. Item number seven is myself. Item number eight is Chief Nimitz. Item number nine is Mr. Lacourse. Item number 10 is Steve Bullock. Item number 11 is Steve Bullock. Item number 12 is Dave Bullock. Item number 13 is Chief Nimitz. Item number 14 is Mr. Lacourse. And item number 15 is myself. And item number 16 is Don Lacourse. And item number 17 is Pat Jenkins.
So I wasn't the lone person here, was I?
Not, no. No, no, no. But that's been noted as well.
Can I ask a question? Just in terms of the way we do it, I read the article. Are we going to go into questions and answers, which probably are more in the case of the number three?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, you know...
There's going to be, on item number three, there's going to be a presentation from the Town Center Vision Committee.
Okay. So that's going to follow it. That'll immediately follow it. That's what I was asking.
So you can read it, you'll get your second. And then if the moderator permits, hopefully he will, there's a presentation from the Town Center Vision Committee. Each member of this vision committee has a part of the presentation.
Good.
After that, if the moderator allows us, we'll keep a field questions, if that people have.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know of this.
Will it be the moderator also doing, what is it? John usually reads it, the reconsideration?
Reconsideration after each article.
Yes.
Oh, I have that written out, so...
I think Mr. Brown needs that one this year because he doesn't have as much as everybody else.
There you go.
Okay.
That's just my... You can have whatever you want. You're charged.
All he has to say is, "I move that we restrict reconsideration of article blank." And then there's a second, and then there's a vote.
You had a question?
I had a question about the presentation by the Town Center Committee?
Yep.
How we, if I might coordinate with them on how long all this is going to take and...
We will know after Wednesday's meeting approximately. We're thinking, what, 20 minutes, maybe?
We're thinking 20 minutes max.
But we'll know more after our Wednesday meeting.
Okay, and I should talk to John?
Court Blumquist is the one who's actually heading up the presentation part of it, but he should always have a segment of it, but yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure. Anything else? No? Is that it, Julie, or do you have something else?
Unless you have any other changes or questions about what's in our report. Just one other thing. The fiscal '19 audit has been completed, so you will see that as soon as they get the bound copies to us.
Okay. And are we good for the town report?
Yeah.
Because that's like right after the deliberative session. Get the type of show going there.
Well, it's not until the needle is at the board, yeah?
Well, you've got to get the information to them and have to print it and then give it back to us.
By March, first week of March.
Can I ask one question? There was a right-to-know training that was planned. It was going to be on primary days, but where did it get moved to?
We haven't picked a new date yet. It's very difficult, as you can imagine, to try to get 30 people to agree on a date.
It would be nice if we could get it maybe after they got the new people?
Yeah, my suggestion would be, well, would be March or late February.
Just so that those people can...
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else? You all set? Number seven. As my understanding, seven B is no longer on the consent agenda, so we're just doing A?
I have a problem with A.
Okay.
Go ahead. On section two, the taxpayer is not satisfied with the decision of the select board or he or she does not receive a decision within a reasonable period. Everything else in there is very uncertain in the sense of a date or a time. So what's reasonable period? Should we have something more?
I think it would be whatever the board determines is reasonable.
Well, can we put it in the document?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what page are you looking at?
The first, first page, paragraph two, second line, with a reasonable period of time, within a reasonable period of time.
Because that's very subjective. You would think reasonable is two weeks. I would think it's two days.
Exactly. So somehow, you know, basically, the select board has to retire. I mean, you know, return a decision.
Right, well, I guess then the board needs to just determine how long you think it's going to take you to figure this out. I mean, there's going to be collecting up the information. There may be some back and forth with the taxpayer in terms of providing additional information. So is two months reasonable?
Yeah, so up to two months, something like that?
So 60 days.
60 days.
60 days. Up to 60 days, if you get that language in there.
Any concerns?
No, that was the only, everything else was very straightforward.
Mr. Brown? So I'm moved to accept the consent agenda. One item as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you want to sign the last page of this and I'll make the correction? And that way it doesn't have to come back or...
Yes, sure. Any discussion? Allohs in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Get what?
No, we're good. Nothing to sign. We're just accepting the policy.
Okay. Okay. All right. Item number eight, I move to enter a non-public session, enter RSA 91-A colon 3. Row number two, section A. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Excuse me. Any discussion? No. Yes.
Sorry, just to let you know, unfortunately, the police chief is not going to be here tonight.
Okay.
I assume, I haven't seen him.
He is not feeling well, shall we say.
Mr. Brown, are you amenable to go to a non-public session A or A?
Yes.
Mr. Lacourse?
Yes.
Mr. Lutby, yes. Motion passes. Okay. So that wasn't on the, signing the, what is it on here? We don't need to, right?
Sign.
The manifest. It's usually listed on the...
Oh, yeah, you're right.
But do we have to approve it or...
Well, no, actually.
Okay, just as long as we sign it, okay?
Well, January's a weird month. It's hard to keep track of what are real Monday meetings and what are fake, what are special Monday meetings.
Fake Monday meetings.
So for the next scheduled meeting, can you schedule us a non-public for eight? All right, anything else?
Nothing.
Are you salivating, too?
No, we're not salivating. Nothing? Miscellaneous, nothing?
Nothing.
I move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Allohs in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.